Hi there. So today, we're going to hear from candidates from the Planning Commission, the Sustainability Commission, the Toxics Board, and the Wheelamoot CPC. So we're starting with the Planning Commission, and first up is Elliot Becker.
Welcome Elliot, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, councilors and staff of the City of Eugene. As a 10-month resident of Eugene, I am very excited about the prospect of getting back into public service. I think it's a very high calling. Eugene is on a precipice of explosive growth in housing and in industry. I have been involved in the County of San Diego as a citizen. The County of San Diego came up with a multi-year expensive general plan and then proceeded to try to break it. So I feel that Eugene has a unique character, and it's going to be one heck of a challenge to go from a metro plan to envision Eugene accommodate the growth and not change the character of this wonderful city, which my lovely wife and I chose, of all the cities in the U.S., to relocate to after 40 years in San Diego. And when I was in the private sector at telecommunications companies, I was called upon to do the impossible for 20 years. I was responsible for the growth of data centers, negotiations, dealing with huge companies, and possible deadlines, and I was looked upon as the person that could get the job done as a procurement specialist. The contribution I could make is I have experience as a cable TV commissioner in the County of San Diego. I was unanimously appointed by the Board of Supervisors. I then became a nationally-known cable consumer advocate and was quoted by the Wall Street Journal, the U.S. News &amp; World Report, the San Francisco Chronicle, and others. I have a very strong fairness ethic in which I would look impartially at all projects, but I would also be very, very careful, as I was as a cable commissioner, to get input from the residents involved when there's new building being done. It does have an impact on the area, and you've got the challenge of explosive growth but not changing the character of Eugene. So I think I have the experience and the drive to do an excellent job, thinking out of the box, working with the council, staff, builders, and residences, and contributing ideas that will be successful.
Thank you Elliot. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Mr. Beeson, three minutes.
Councilors, I am Ken Beeson. As you know, I appreciate being invited to interview. I'm interested in serving on the Planning Commission. I believe that I offer a good combination of experience and a good combination of experience and commitment that would allow me to be an effective member of that group. I was raised and I've lived in Eugene most of my life. I have 30 years of municipal electric and water utility experience at E-Web. I retired in 2010, and my emphasis there was planning, development, operation of public utility, electric and water systems. I spent most of my time on the electric side of the house, but I have a good working knowledge of both utilities. I'm interested in public service. I believe I can offer value back to the community. I'm finishing up six years of service on the Budget Committee this spring. I'm also in, I've spent about three years on the Human Services Commission, and the last two years of that, I've been Chair of that group. I've got, I think, a good working experience and strong interest in public agency management, operation, and governance. Some of my interests in that area include local government, civic affairs, community issue resolution, public finance, and budget. I also would note that I have a working knowledge of nonprofit operation and management. And I think as some of you know, my daughter and I started a nonprofit about six years ago now, and we continue to operate that effectively. And I think all of that provides me with a good foundation to learn about and to become an effective member of this group. I'm interested in providing input on local planning and land use, interested in learning about it. I'd like to help determining the most effective uses of limited land and what I think is probably limited infrastructure inside the urban growth area inside our community. How best to accommodate increasing population? And how best to accommodate, I think, kind of a diversity, if you will, in income and so on? I'd like to be part of and an effective part of the community decision-making in that. I'm able to review substantial amounts of information related to particular... Oh, okay. Watch the clock. I can, I believe I can effectively represent my opinions, and I can listen to different views. I think I can work effectively to achieve consensus. So I'm interested in the work, and I can commit the time, and I can commit the energy. I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're going to hear from Crystal Abrams, who is interviewing for a position on the Toxics Board.
Where's Greg Ringer?
Greg Ringer cannot attend, will provide statement if the council considers.
There's an updated...
Hi. My name's Crystal Abrams. Excuse the bandage, I got in a bike crash over the weekend. So my face doesn't normally look like this. Anyways, thank you. Thank you for interviewing me today for the Toxics Board. My name is Crystal Abrams. I was raised in Florida in a Cherokee Muskogee family, and I moved to Oregon in 2009 to study environmental science at the University of Oregon. I've always been, I've always been very interested in science and using good data to help make the world a better place for everybody. I strongly support the Eugene Toxics Program to collect data and recommend ways to protect our community from hazardous chemicals. I believe that everyone deserves to have equal access to information about what's in their air and water. And ultimately, I think this knowledge will lead to stronger and healthier communities. Currently, I work at Beyond Toxics, where I advocate stronger protections for human and environmental health. I also serve on the board at the Walama Restoration Project, which provides non-chemical environmental restoration and education services. As for the Eugene Toxics Board, I wish to contribute my scientific education and background and as well as my experience in environmental advocacy and holding up the integrity of the program. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Hope your head feels better.
Thank you.
So we're now going to move on to candidates from the Sustainability Commission, and we're going to be starting with Doug Edwards.
Which is better, Chair or...
Your choice.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Doug Edwards. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I appreciate your consideration for my application for the Sustainability Commission. In my three minutes, I'll do a very quick summary of my background and then address the two questions asked in the email inviting me here. Why am I interested in being appointed to the Sustainability Commission, and what contributions can I make? During my 30-year career, I've worked as an engineer, program manager, entrepreneur, attorney at a law firm, general counsel of a technology company, and program director at a university. I have graduate degrees in engineering, business, and law. All of my previous jobs were interesting in their own way, however, none truly fed my passion to work on environmental issues. So I decided to semi-retire in order to spend the next few decades of my life working on sustainability and climate change, as I believe these are fundamental challenges for all of our futures. While looking through the city's website for a way I could volunteer my time, I found links to the openings on the boards and commissions. Given my plans, applying to the Sustainability Commission was an easy choice to make. The City of Eugene is a leader in sustainability practices and planning, for example, through the Climate Recovery Ordinance. Continuing to improve our sustainability practices will help meet the goals set forth in current plans, while ideas implemented here could make global impact as they are adopted by other jurisdictions. In short, I'm interested in serving on the Sustainability Commission because I believe it is an excellent way to work on practical solutions to what I believe to be a serious global problem. This leads to the second question, what contribution can I make? I've attended the last two Sustainability Commission meetings, and during the April meeting, there was a very interesting discussion among the commissioners relating to what the scope of the commission should be. It was stated during this discussion that the City Council relies on the commission to act as a trusted advisor with respect to sustainability issues before the council. I understand and am well-suited to that role, as I have acted in that capacity as a trusted advisor throughout my professional life, particularly during my career as an attorney, where on a daily basis, I would advise decision-makers on complex issues and provide reasoned and supported recommendations. With respect to other contributions I can make, I will bring my broad background in education and professional background. I believe in open communication with all stakeholders. I will seek out these viewpoints and respect opinions that are different than mine. I believe in collaboration to solve problems. Tonight, the Sustainability Commission has on its agenda building capacity, and if selected, I look forward to adding meaningfully to the existing capacity and working with the great folks already on the commission. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. If selected, I would appreciate hearing any input you have as to how I, as an individual commissioner, and the commission itself could better serve the City Council and the City of Eugene. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug.
Next up is David Lloyd.
Hi, I'm David Lloyd, applying for a position on the Sustainability Commission. And first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I think there are three main reasons why I'm excited to be able to serve on the Sustainability Commission. First, it aligns really well with the experience and interest in sustainability that I've had over the last, going on two decades now. I'm fairly new to Eugene, and I'm looking for a way to get engaged and make a difference in the community. And there are lots of ways to get engaged, but I can think of no better way to do that than serving on this commission. Sustainability touches everything and everyone. It's very important. Also, as I said in my application, I think, my feeling is that the progress we're going to make in sustainability in the current political climate is going to be at the local level. And I mean, here we are. This is, Eugene has tried really hard to be a leader in this area, and I'd like to be part of that leadership. I think I can make a significant contribution to the commission. I've read through the work plan, this is the last fiscal year's work plan. I see lots of areas where I think I can help. For example, in figuring out, helping to figure out how we're going to meet the CRO objectives, that's lots of challenges there. I'm very interested in sustainable business practices and sustainable economic development. I'd like to really help there. I think my background in engineering has really helped me to balance big visions, which we all have, with the limited resources which every organization has. I think that'll be a benefit. I also have a lot of experience working on commissions, working with city staff, and other members of the commission, members of the community, and I think that would be a benefit also. So in summary, I'm passionate about sustainability. I'm very excited to have the opportunity to be on the commission, and I think I can make a substantial contribution and make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
Next up is Eric Burke.
Hi, everyone. I'm Eric with, Eric Burke with Friends of Trees in Eugene. Thanks a lot for having me. I first started thinking about sustainability seriously about 30 years ago in the mid-'80s, when I was a student, my first year at LCC, taking a research paper class and started reading the writing of Wendell Berry and Wes Jackson, sustainable agriculture kind of stuff. And back then, I was an idealistic teenager who believed that sustainability meant radically changing our society and our way of life to one based on contemporary solar energies, Wes Jackson talked about. 10 years later, in grad school, I took a class in sustainability and the taxonomy of the concept of sustainability, and our class saw how elusive and socially constructed the concept is. Delving into the history of the concept, I learned, excuse me, about its roots in the concept of maximum sustained yield in forestry and fisheries, which led us to many of the crises we face in fisheries and forestry now. So honestly, I'm skeptical of the term sustainability in a lot of ways, but it's an important concept that I need to use in my work every day in many different ways, different definitions of it. So I'm trying to make Friends of Trees, a local nonprofit I work for, sustainable in a financial sense, in the long-term, locally funded, funded in the long-term sense. Another way is that I'm trying to make us more sustainable in the sense of using less fossil fuels to do what we do, so we are building our Plant by Bike program. And I also still see the need to move towards that idealistic idea of it in a long, slow, incremental way also. I've changed a lot over the years. I think I can contribute to Eugene and the Sustainability Commission in several ways, and some of the things that I bring to it are that, as I just mentioned, I've thought about sustainability and what it means and how one can contribute to it for a long, long time, and have tried working towards that in a lot of ways. I grew up here in Eugene, and I went to our, through our local school system and college in Eugene and Corvallis. I also feel like I've, have a handle on how people think about it locally more than most, because I've gone door-to-door through a lot of Eugene and Springfield, talking to people about urban forestry, about sustainability, and about all kinds of issues. I also worked in social science locally for 11 years and interviewed over 1,500 individuals and families locally, asking them all kinds of questions. And, does that mean my time's up?
Yeah, wrap up, please.
Okay, I'll wrap up really quickly. So I've done, I have a lot of experience. I've also worked both lots of blue-collar and white-collar jobs locally, so I have a lot of background in that, and really think that I can contribute to sustainability in Eugene. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Hi, Kelsey.
Hi. Will the timer automatically start?
Yep.
Members of the City Council, good afternoon and thank you for your time. My name is Kelsey Zalvor, and I'm an urban planner at Cameron McCarthy, a landscape architecture and planning firm here in Eugene. I received my master's in community and regional planning at the UO last spring, and my bachelor in environmental science and a certificate in sustainability from the University of Iowa in 2014. With a background in science and planning, I can serve as a conduit between technical analysis and social decision-making to foster spaces that serve both people and the environment in Eugene. My entrance into sustainability work has been anything but intended. I went to college wanting to be a novelist. As a child, I loved writing stories and creating my own worlds, and I was certain I would spend the rest of my life writing fiction. However, my first publication was instead about the sustainability footprint of urban environments. For over six years, I've learned to see my work in planning around environmental issues as living my own stories, replete with a full scope of characters, conflicts, and happy endings when done right. I'm interested in the Sustainability Commission because I want to apply this unique perspective to address some of the most challenging and crucial topics in Eugene, such as increasing climate resilience, enhancing access to affordable housing, promoting efficient land use, and setting policy groundwork for the future of automated vehicles. In our current political climate, I believe strong local response is vital to facing these challenges. I've honed the tools with which to address these topics through several roles. At UO, as a fellow at the Sustainable Cities Initiative, I helped facilitate the Sustainable City Year Program, where I became aware of common opportunities and constraints in environmental and urban locations, and innovative means of responding to economic, environmental, and social challenges across the state of Oregon. I also served the City of Eugene in waste prevention and green building in the Planning and Development Department as a Love Food Not Waste intern, helping to develop the current curbside compost program. I learned that it is sometimes difficult for renters to access the same services, such as composting, as homeowners, which is why I'm interested in ensuring resource accessibility for renters. In my current role as a planner at Cameron McCarthy, I developed an understanding of the legal and political landscape of Eugene, and a strong ethical commitment to planning inclusive spaces. As a woman under 30 who is a renter and has relied on alternative transportation for the past three years, I seek to represent these qualities with an added focus on public safety. In sum, my greatest strength is my ability to draw upon my range of experiences in sustainable work, to adapt to the specific needs of the community while accommodating diverse voices. It is clear Eugene places a strong premium on addressing the topics I've dedicated my professional and personal life to understanding. As such, I would welcome the opportunity to help continue writing Eugene's story as a city seeking a sustainable and livable future. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Thanks.
Next, we have Callie Orkin.
Thank you for your consideration for this commission. I've been passionate about sustainability since beginning my journey as a young professional in 2009, in the middle of a recession, when I thought to myself, what will the world need next to solve our big problems? And all the signals were pointing to sustainability programs and initiatives. I enrolled in an MBA degree program with an emphasis in sustainable business, because I felt like the business community would yield the biggest influence over our environment. Business school expanded my ideas about what sustainability means. It isn't just about getting rid of garbage and toxins in our natural environments. Rather, the definition entails being able to sustain our quality of life and managing our resources responsibly. Further, successful efforts in sustainability incorporated systems thinking and foreseeing unintended consequences. I graduated with the belief that, sorry, that only after building a strong community where the most basic needs are met can we achieve a healthy environment for everyone. I want to carry that message into this community. Living in Eugene, I can see there is a strong divide between business and environmental advocates. I don't believe this needs to be the case. I want to help bring clarity, compromise, and realistic solutions to Eugene's efforts to create a happy, clean, and healthy environment. What I bring to the table is a passion for people, business, and the natural world, as well as a curiosity for finding new ways to achieve harmony among those three. I have skills in communication, marketing, data analysis, teaching, project management, and event planning. I would love to help tell the people of Eugene what the city is up to, assist in analyzing and displaying results in engaging ways, and research what other cities are doing successfully that we could look at doing here. After attending the Young Professionals Summit last year and joining the Steering Committee this year, I've been inspired to participate more as a citizen and use my voice to better our community. I've been an active member of business and arts activities for several years, and I'm ready to step up my service, really listen, and make a contribution. I hope that in this process, it will inspire others to find ways to take an interest in the city and adopt a mindset of continuous improvement for our families, businesses, and environment. Thank you again. I look forward to this opportunity and future opportunities in this great city, which has been really good to me. Thank you.
Next up is Zach Mulholland.
Counselors, thank you for having me today. My name's Zach Mulholland, live in Ward 1. I've been on the Sustainability Commission for a little under a year and a half now, filling out the remainder of another individual's four-year term, and here today to ask you to please allow me to continue in that service. I really appreciate the opportunity to try and help the community with regards to sustainability issues. I'd say it's been a learning and growing experience being on the commission. The first six months or so, we were filling out the remainder of the previous year's work plan, and for this year's work plan, I was made Chair of the Climate Committee, where we've been working on a number of policies that we're preparing to forward up to the council soon. We're actually showing those to the commission for the first time tonight. One is the Energy Score Policy for new homes that are being constructed and when homes are sold, that new home buyers would have access to how the energy use of that house has been over time, through an Energy Score Program developed by the Department of Energy that Portland has now required for all new home sales. Also been working on that committee with Art Farley to draft a EV-ready home proposal, where all new homes that are constructed would have the wiring capable of installing a power station for charging EV vehicles. And so trying to get some of this low-hanging fruit that is out there and develop those policies and get those in front of council hopefully next month. So over the next few years, I hope that we can continue to kind of transition the Sustainability Commission from what I've felt has been something of a reactive body to a little more proactive and trying to think forward and ahead and bring policies to council that can help us move forward on our climate goals and all of the goals that we care about. And I think I'd just like to, you know, as we move forward, updating the CEAP is going to be really important, the Climate Energy Action Plan. My understanding, that's on the agenda for this fall, and I look forward to trying to support that process as best that we can and continue to try and push forward climate policy and support things like transportation demand management and bicycle and pedestrian transit wherever we can, so we can build a compact and walkable community. I think I'd just like to finish by saying, please consider talking to my peers on the commission. I think that we're doing good work, especially, let's talk to my peers on the Climate Committee, Kevin O'Brien, Art Farley, Ralph McDonald, Howard Saxian, Thomas Price, talk to Sue Walling, who I work with on the Transportation Committee, working with Ralph on a new tiny Homes Committee to look at issues around secondary dwelling units and pocket neighborhoods. So I thank you very much for your time and encourage you to talk to them. Thank you very much.
Zach?
Our final candidate for the Sustainability Commission today is Arianna White.
My name is Arianna White. I'm an interested citizen seeking to volunteer with the city. I'm willing to commit to a four-year term because of my passion for urban design and my love of Eugene. I bring to the table an outsider's eye. I'm not affiliated with any city entity, and I have no particular agenda outside of the goal of creating a sustainable city. However, I do bring quite a bit of... However, I do bring quite a bit of knowledge and training to this viewpoint. As a graduate of the University of Oregon with a master's degree in geography, I have a keen eye for the landscape, both built and natural. How people live on the land into the future is something I think about a lot, and I'm excited to give thoughtful input to this commission. I'm particularly excited about the Envision Eugene Plan. In the past, I've taken several urban geography classes and have training in transportation planning, planning for people, historical preservation, and project management. I'm versed in tools like LEED. You won't have to explain a lot to me, because I'm good at finding out what I need to know independently and then asking questions as appropriate. I listen more than I talk, and I base my decisions on data and research wherever it is possible to do so. I'm here because I am concerned for the future of the city. The problems we face as a society extend past the borders of Lane County, and the actions that we can take to mitigate them are individual and collective at the same time. When it is easy for people to act sustainably, they will do so, regardless of their political or ideological leanings. When sustainable practices are accessible to the populace without barriers created by income or ability, people find it easy to take the sustainable course. When we design a city to sustain life into the centuries to come, the people will enjoy living here, and the city will remain vital, as you all well know. As a volunteer with the longtime Watershed Council and someone who walks and takes public transportation, I have direct experience with the aspects of the city that help make us resilient. I think on long time scales, not what the effects will be next year or the year after, but for the centuries to come, wherever it is possible to do so. I hope to work productively with the other members of the committee to continue to create a strong and vibrant city that is home to a diverse and happy population. I believe that we can get there using the tools that we have. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Arianna.
I'm sorry, do you have any questions?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Unmas.
Here we have Aiden Forsy, who is interviewing for a position on the Willamette CPC.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Aiden Forsy. Thank you for inviting me for a, to interview for a position with the Willamette CPC today. Quick background on me, I am a graduate student at the University of Oregon studying community and regional planning in the Planning and Public Policy Department. I am also currently a temporary employee in the city manager's office, working with Ethan Nelson and Chelsea Clinton on the Responsible Events Program, aiming to learn how cities can use events to reach triple bottom line sustainability goals. I am interested in serving on the CPC for a few reasons. The first is a professional reason. I think that serving on the CPC will give me a really good experience to take with me in my future career as a planner. The second is more academic. As I'm learning more and more about the particulars of how city government works, I think that the CPC can provide me with some insight into how cities interface with their citizens. Public involvement is one of my main focal areas, and so as a graduate student, I think that the CPC is a good chance for me to get real-world experience with that. The third reason, though, is the most important and my personal reason for joining, wanting to join the CPC. Since high school, I've been focused in working in environmental spaces, starting as a volunteer with the Multnomah County Outdoor School Program, teaching sixth graders about water science, receiving my bachelor's in natural resources from Cornell University, working in environmental education and habitat restoration at the Multnomah County Outdoor School Program with a utility company in southeast Washington, and then most recently with the Ridgefield National Wildlife Refuge in Ridgefield, Washington. These experiences all stem from my same love of the outdoors and from the knowledge that natural spaces are often misunderstood. The value of the Willamette is enormous. It's a natural area in an urban setting, very accessible for, for all kinds of people, complete with native plant animal species, and with a nearby nature there, they're dedicated nonprofit, doing vital education restoration programs that can preserve and enhance the benefits that the city receives from that space. My hope is that as a full member of the Willamette CPC, I can put my desire to share my knowledge of natural areas and the natural world to work. I've already been attending Willamette meetings on the invitation of President Colleen McCaffrey as a non-voting member since January. So as such, I've had a bit of an introduction to the issues facing the Willamette, both environmental and not. I am ready to add my voice to those discussions, and I believe I can add a lot of positive value to them, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks. Aiden.
And that concludes our interviews for this afternoon. Thank you.
We have a written con, we're going to get a written comment from Gregory Ringer. We do have one from Helen.
Buzenberg.
That's for Plan Commission. Helen Buzenberg gave us one for sustainability. And then we have one more. And Greg will also give us one for Sustainability Commission.
Yes.
He's on both. And then, and then we have Jacob Segal. He'll present the.
522, like at the public forum at the beginning of it?
Yes, there's a handful of candidates that couldn't make it to either today's interview session or Monday's, this previous Monday. So we've asked them to come to your next city council meeting next Monday, and they'll present their three-minute statements before the public forum begins.
Right at the beginning.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Who's place does Mulholland take?